Thank you so much. So the panelists will be coming in. I'm excited. Thank you all for being here this evening. When I look around this room, I really see representation from everything we need to move this community forward, to move our beloved city forward. And I know that's all first and foremost in our hearts and minds frustration. God, sometimes it takes us in different directions. It's very frustration is a great distractor. But if we all come in here again, settled in our right hearts and our right minds, to move not just this meeting, whatever comes out of this meeting forward, but to continue to work collectively together to move our communities forward. I believe we can do it. I believe in St. Louis. I believe in y'all. I really do. So with that, we'll go ahead and let our panelists enter for the evening. Why don't I get suited? I just reintroduce myself to some, introduce myself to others. My name is Shemene Clark Hubbard. I humbly serve as Alder Lady in the 10th Ward of the City of St. Louis. We in the 10th Ward right now. So welcome to the 10th Ward. And I am blessed to be here, to be the moderator of this very important conversation. I think everyone on this panel, we all have a role to play here in this work. But we also respect and honor the role that all of you here play as well. And I mean, everybody from the clergy, from the community, from the media, from the neighbors, from our other elected officials. If we have any other elected officials in the room, can you please stand and wave so that we can acknowledge you all in the room, please? Thank you. I associate representation from our Congresswoman Cory Bush's office as well. I want to thank you all, our panelists, for being here this evening. These conversations here, it was noted on the flyer for this event that they were led by questions that had been turned in for this town hall, as well as you all were passed a piece of paper on your entrance to be able to pass questions to the staff as well. About those questions, the more questions that are alike will be compiled and they will be addressed during the allotted time this evening. We have 6:00 to 7:30. And we know that the challenges in the City of St. Louis can't be solved from 6:00 to 7:30. But this is a good step, right? And so make sure you ask the questions and what the President's Office has assured us is that any question that's not answered tonight will be followed up on. So again, I thank everyone on this panel that plays very important roles here in the City of St. Louis. And what's important is they're the only one that can play that role. So talking to the Director of Public Safety about what the Director of Public Safety for the Urban League, that doesn't make sense to compare them to each other because they both work in their own spaces. But together is how we're going to work to bring each other forward. I'm saying that to say we all have to have a respect for each other's role here. And if you don't understand the system, or if you have a question about who plays what role, ask that question, but please don't blame or please don't waste anyone's time, most especially you all's time, asking someone about something that they don't have any control over. All right, so with that, we're going to go ahead and have the panelists introduce themselves with brief remarks, two minutes per. We'll start off with our President Megan Green, President of Board of Aldermen.
Thank you, Alder Woman Clark Hubbard, for agreeing to moderate tonight's discussion. Want to first start by thanking members of the panel for accepting my office's invitation to come and be here this evening, as well as the Urban League for hosting us. And I want to thank all of the residents that are here tonight for braving our wet, becoming sloshy streets to get here and write in all those who wrote in in advance with their questions. I wanted to convene this panel because public safety is a shared responsibility in our city. It is shared between city government and community organizations. And while we often focus solely on policing as our means of public safety, the reality is, as Alder Woman Clark Hubbard just said, each and every one of us at these tables play a role in creating public safety and keeping our residents safe. For our part at the Board of Aldermen, our responsibility is first to listen to what the public wants and to create local policies that address those concerns by working with city departments and local organizations. Through those conversations, the board is addressing public safety by both funding, prevention, and intervention programs, and by also passing laws that regulate issues that compromise public safety in our city. The board has and will continue to work with the Police Department to bring back automated traffic enforcement in a way that doesn't undermine people's civil liberties. These are two issues that we have heard are top of mind for folks in our city. And last year, the board established a safety net programs like Right to Counsel for tenants facing eviction and our Guaranteed Basic Income Pilot Program for public school families. And we also approved funding for the newly established Office of Violence Prevention. These programs are part of an overall strategy to alleviate root causes of crime, poverty in particular. And enforcing the law and holding people accountable is important. And equally important is interrupting the circumstances that lead to crime before they actually occur. So I'm looking forward to hearing from all of my colleagues on this panel tonight. Want to thank everybody again for coming this evening. And with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Robert Tracy.
Thank you, President Green. And thank you very much, the Urban League, for having this and having this town hall and talk about some really important things and mostly public safety and what we can do both for adults and juveniles. And so one of the questions was asked, what do you do to work across different departments and to be able to cooperate and make sure we collaborate to try to make sure we can make this holistic? Well, it's just not about making arrests, but trying to do intervention, prevention, enforcement. And these are the three key things that Mayor Tashira Jones has talked about at a lot of community meetings and just working. And there's Mayor Jones right now. And I want to thank the trust that Mayor Jones has in me to put me in charge of this police department. And I look, I see several of our police officers that are here, and they do a tremendous job day in, day out. And as we're down police officers, we're always talking about police officers that have left the department. I want to celebrate the ones that stayed. I want to celebrate the officers that are in this room right now that are doing the job each other does, as well as our civilian personnel. And in making sure that we go to every community meeting and make sure that we're present coming out of this pandemic, coming out of the civil unrest after the George Floyd murder, making sure that we can get back together to bring this community together. And working with things, we've seen some results that I'll talk about later, but we are down in overall crime. We are down in some of the major felony crimes this year that ended 2023 versus last year. And we're showing a reduction, almost a 10-year low in homicides. And the homicides number was 158 this year. That's progress. That's not a celebration. That's way too many homicides that we're having. So how are we working with everyone else? Well, we got to make sure that we got the Office of Violence Prevention. We work with our legislators. We work with our communities. We work to build public trust. We work with our non-for-profits. We work with our civic associations. And we got to be in this together, and we got to talk about how we're going to get there. And some of the things that you'll see, I might not be able to get into tonight, but we're also doing a press conference tomorrow to go into greater detail of the things that we've done, what we continue to do, and what the plans to make this a safer city, working with everyone. The other question was asked for me, and I don't want to take up everybody else's time, but it's about what are we doing to prevent youth violence and how we're working with the youth strategy. So the Office of Violence Prevention, some of the programs that are put in place, we've extended hours and after hours. We've had, we have programs, planned programs through the administration. And then looking at some of the numbers that I thought were very critical from this year versus last year, a 47% reduction in our juveniles being shot in this city and a 50% overall victims. I think a lot of these programs are coming together. And it's not just policing alone, but it's all of us working together with common goal. And we're starting to see the results, and I want to make sure that we're building off of them. So thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to Dr. Punch. But I will take this point of privilege again. Welcome, Mayor Jones. Mayor Jones is Alder Lady too, and I not only stand up here as Alder Lady, I actually stand up here as a mother of five, actually a victim, a victim, a mother of a youth victim of gun violence here in the City of St. Louis just last year. And I would be remiss if I did not stand up and honor the work again that I said that Dr. Punch has done. Because when my daughter was shot, that was the first call I made, I'm going to be honest. Not, and it's because of what I heard. Now, it's not because the police weren't called. The police had already been there. I got the call after the fact that your daughter was shot. So the first call I got as I'm running into the hospital was Dr., the first call I made, rather, was Dr. Punch. So with that, please make your introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Shemene. And a deep honor to you for the way you show up all day, every day, for the 6-3-1-1-2, okay? Appreciate that. I'm Dr. LJ Punch. I'm a trauma surgeon and have been in the St. Louis region for seven years now, galvanized by the discussion here around the issue of public safety and public health. I founded a nonprofit organization five years ago committed to reducing the impact of trauma, which began the day Mr. James Clark stood in front of me and said, "Where you at?" Because I worked in a fancy hospital and did a lot of really intense things for people, but I could stitch them up with gold, it didn't matter. What mattered was the resources and the reality of their environment to recover from the impact of trauma in their day-to-day lives. That work now expresses itself through two free clinics called The Brick and The Tea. The Brick is a clinic that focuses on people who have been shot or threatened by a bullet, including when a loved one has been lost. The Tea focuses on people in deep poverty, struggling with issues of addiction, at risk for overdose. Those programs, since that moment when Mr. Clark stood in front of me, have served over 26,000 encounters over the last three years, reducing the impact of trauma every day, largely fueled by the people in this room. That includes the city, and that includes the citizens of St. Louis. And we bring this one single message, that as a physician, we understand, as a community of health, we understand health. We want people to be their best selves. We think people have a right to be. But we understand justice as well, the concept of being right. And the intersection between justice and health is safety. So we are excited to be here now in a new era of collaboration like we've never had before, having opportunities to work with our community, work with different components of folks working to keep us healthy and keep things just, correcting really decades of divestment and insisting on asymmetrical investment and what it means to help our people be well. We have flyers outside, and I'm really excited to share those recent stats on just how much this work has grown a lot through the support of the city itself.
Thank you. Circuit Attorney Gabe Gore.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Gabe Gore. I was appointed Circuit Attorney on May 30 of last year. So I've been in the position for about seven months now. Can you guys hear me okay? So when I was appointed Circuit Attorney, we were really faced with a situation where there was a deep concern that the Circuit Attorney's Office had stopped playing its vital role in our criminal justice system. And without the Circuit Attorney's Office, you would have a complete collapse of that criminal justice system here in the City of St. Louis. So what I've been working on the past seven months is really trying to rebuild and restore the office. Since I've been in office, I've hired 25 attorneys, many of whom are very experienced prosecutors. We've hired 19 support staff, so we've added 44 people to the office during my time there. We have begun working collaboratively with the Police Department, making sure that that relationship is one of mutual respect and collaboration so that we can deliver the level of public safety that the citizens of St. Louis deserve. We've been working hard to engage with the community and build that relationship and build a relationship of trust with the community. So it's a real pleasure to have all of you here today and have the opportunity to engage with you. In addition to that, we've been doing the work of showing up where we're supposed to be, when we're supposed to be there. We've been working to work our way through a backlog of homicides that are pending here in the City of St. Louis, 250 homicides. In addition to that, we've been working our way through the backlog of applications for warrants pending in the office. Applications for warrants, 6,700 were pending. None of those were homicides that had not been reviewed and charging decisions had not been made. And there were hundreds and hundreds of violent crimes in those 6,700 pending warrants that had not been reviewed. And we've reviewed those and made charging decisions where appropriate. So that's the work that we've been up to. We are now in the process of launching a diversion program, a very robust diversion program, that I'll have an opportunity to talk about later this evening because I think I'm going to get a question about that. So we've been hard at work doing that. I'm pleased to report that I know that our work has saved lives here in the City of St. Louis. I know that effective prosecution, while not the answer to violent crime and solving violent crime, that effective prosecution is an important part of delivering a high level of public safety to the citizens of St. Louis, and we've been doing that work. And when you have violent offenders who are repeatedly offending, committing gun crimes, you know, it's important to have effective prosecution in place, and that's what we've been doing. So I look forward to engaging and having a further discussion with you.
Thank you. We'll move along. He's not in the room, but a very important part of public safety here in the City of St. Louis is the space that we are in here now that was created and was made whole by the Michael McMillan under the leadership of Michael McMillan. He's not here, but I think that him and all his staff that's here, if you can wave your hand, I think we should absolutely acknowledge them because this is a beacon of public safety on so many levels here in the City of St. Louis. Mr. Clark cousin, Clark.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Good evening. I would first like to give honor and thanks to God. He is the giver and sustainer of all of our lives. And I believe that he's using St. Louis right now to make a statement. And if we can put a mustard seed size level of faith in that, we will continue to trend in the direction that we're trending, and we will be able to set an example that the whole country can follow. Do you all believe that that's necessary right now?
Absolutely.
We have to be, we have to be focused on this. Then I want to acknowledge a man who owes St. Louis nothing. St. Louis now owes him. Former Fire Chief Sherman George just came. Can we please acknowledge Chief Sherman George? Chief George. The Urban League of Metropolitan St. Louis has housing head start, the Serve Our Sons program. We have weatherization. We have a worker reentry program. That's one of, those are a few of 55 programs that the Urban League of Metropolitan St. Louis oversees and does a high caliber job servicing the citizens of St. Louis City, County, and East St. Louis. Alder Woman, you stole my thunder, but can I please ask the Urban League staff to raise their hands once again, please? Some of the hardest working men and women in social service. I served as the Vice President of Public Safety. And when I came on board, I asked Mr. McMillan, "What is your vision for the Division of Public Safety?" And he said, "James, what is your vision?" And so I was able to take my time and come up with the right perspective on it. I believe that public safety starts with a very unique lens. We call it in the Division of Public Safety, the N-P-L. Say N. Neighborhood. We've got to have a strong neighborhood approach. You see all the, but we want to be honest. Social service somewhere became social science. Let's just be real. We began to study and analyze from 3,000 feet. So we believe that we've got to take a deep dive into our neighborhoods. Say P.
P.
P stands for front porch. We've got to be able to engage families standing flat-footed, how the young folks say it, ten toes on their front porch. The L, say L.
L.
Living room. We've got to be able to get into the living room because the behavior that's taking place in the living room will eventually show up in the neighborhood. So we take a very direct approach using that lens. We, we are implementing the Serving Our Streets model where we believe we've got to resource neighborhoods. We've got to bring the resources directly to families because families are not leaving their homes. In the old social service paradigm, the most important occupation was the caseworker. Every organization counted their caseworkers. Because of the depth of the dysfunction, brothers and sisters, we need to recalibrate. We need to have a new tip of that spear. We call them urban engagement specialists. Trained, uniformed, disciplined men and women who are able to go into the neighborhood and engage families right where they live. We focus on four neighborhoods. Hyde Park, Jeff Van Delu, Kingsway, and Dayton. We're now about to take, take this, this, this model over into East St. Louis, and we just confirmed a St. Louis County area focusing on neighborhoods, not the whole block. We are talking about a, about a four-by-six radius. We are in the neighborhood every day, looking to get an assessment done on the family. We want to know what are the social service needs of everybody who lives in this home. We then take that assessment to our case managers, and we do neighborhood-based case management. We identify who those high-risk people are. We identify who those high-risk people are. And the best way to stop a bullet is a job. And we work with our Save Our Sons program under the leadership of Brother Tydril Stevens. He and his staff, they do a phenomenal job of helping young men and women find employment. We also distribute Narcan. We are working to help individuals find housing. We are also now increasing our efforts to provide families in high-crime area with motion lights and also Ring cameras. When you look at it, yeah. Yeah, they need them, y'all. See, that's what I'm saying. See, that's the 3,000 feet. We got to zero in on it. We also have urban opioid triage. We are overlooking, and we're not giving this, this fentanyl crisis the attention that it demands. We're not. We, we do urban opioid triage three times a week in some of the city's most hardest-hit open-air drug markets. We also have a very active gun violence de-escalation program where we have urban engagement specialists that are out in the community looking for conflicts. We're about to bring in the barbers to talk to them to see if they can help us to identify conflicts. And we work around the clock to de-escalate the conflict. Now, if we can't de-escalate the conflict, then we relocate people. We move them out of St. Louis. So far this year, we have successfully de-escalated 68 conflicts, and we've had to move 14 families out of the St. Louis metropolitan area because they wasn't going to press pause. We also operate the reroute program. And the reroute program is a partnership with St. Louis County Juvenile Courts where they refer to us juveniles that they don't think should be behind bars. Not every juvenile that does a crime needs to sit behind, sit in jail. So we have a staff that literally work with them around the clock. They are responsible for calling them three times a day and seeing them every other day and working to help them find activities that they want to be involved in. We also do family resource enrollment right now at three neighborhood churches. Brothers and sisters, I believe that we have got to stop calling the church out, and we've got to invite the church in. The church is the number one populated institution in every neighborhood. So we started a new model, Family Resource Enrollment, where once a week, individuals can come to these churches and they can complete that assessment form so they can get utility assistance. They can get Narcan if they have a loved one that is trapped in, in addiction. We are going to expand that model, and we're going to turn neighborhood churches that have the facility into full-scale neighborhood family resource centers that'll serve families five days a week. There's a church on every other corner. We're also active in cleanup buildup. And madam, I am, Madam Alder Woman, I'm a stickler for time, so I am wrapping this up. But we're also active, well, see, we are cousins. But we're also active in the mental health space because we've got to begin to deliver mental health services straight into our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Please acknowledge that, though. That's what happens when you're entrenched and passionate about the work that you do. You know it. You can speak it and you can roll it off. And what I want to make sure we do now is honor you all's time and make sure that we have enough time for you all. But the questions that, again, please continue to submit the questions as you think of them because they are actively compiling those so that we can get as many of them answered in the room as well. We have pre-submitted questions. What we're going to do, we're out here doing this work together. So I'm going to tell you, Mr. Clark, you answered about four questions already. So thank you for that. We can always go back. So we'll continue with the introduction of Dr. Coyle, and then we'll go straight into the questions and try to pick up on time so we can get to the community.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Charles Coyle. I, I did not go to medical school.
Director.
And I don't have a PhD, right?
I say that to you in your minutes too. I don't know why. Maybe I'm speaking something.
Right. But thank you for that. Let me thank President Green and the Urban League for this opportunity to come out and speak with you this evening. I'm the Director of Public Safety. And if you listen to the news or read a newspaper, you know that public safety is just a part of everything that goes on. We're in the news a lot. We have some very important departments. We're probably the largest department in city government. I came from the Fire Department. And James Clark mentioned Chief George. I worked directly for him for a long time. I've spent four decades in the Fire Department. So I have spent my entire adult life in public safety. It's important to me. I have a lot of passion when it comes to public safety. So one of the areas that I want to make sure I get in are the things that we are doing in public safety. We have questions that we're going to answer. When I came on board February 13th of last year, the thing that stuck out to me was our 911 center. And I say that because 911 in public safety is everything. You can't be a citizen, visitor, or worker in the City of St. Louis and not need an effective 911 system. You have to be able to get emergency resources to you as quickly as possible. That was one of my first challenges. The groundwork had been laid out for it. We were over 50 vacant positions. We had very, very poor response times to calls. People were holding on to calls. So it presented a problem when you called 911 and you were placed on hold. And to put that in perspective, if you're calling 911 and it's a medical emergency and your place don't hold, that multiplies the problem, right? And it was serious, and it was very serious to me. So we began aggressively trying to recruit dispatchers. 911 dispatchers, EMS dispatchers, and fire dispatchers. We were 50 down completely. I would say today, we're down 14. 12 of police dispatchers and four EMS dispatchers. So that's 16. So we had been working tirelessly to make sure that we were able to bring people on. Now, I want to make sure I explain a little bit about this job. It's not a job that anyone can do. It is an extremely stressful job. What the police officer and the firefighter and the EMT experiences on the emergency scene, the dispatcher experiences as well. They're first responders just like anyone else. So it's not meant for everyone. So we know that we're going to have turnover, but we have made, we have really turned the corner. You ever seen in the news complaints about being on hold for 911? You haven't heard of that? You haven't heard of that? I haven't received any additional complaints, but I was getting them daily when I first came aboard. We now are taking calls. We have a national standard of within ten seconds to answer ninety percent of our calls. This time last year, we're answering the upper fifty and sixty percent. We're now steadily at the eighty percent range and hitting ninety, sometimes ninety-five. So, we're moving forward. We have, uh, gotten a lot of things done with it, but it's still a work in progress. We still have to keep, encourage dispatchers to stay. We began by raising their pay. Um, we began by our interview process. They literally have to have background checks because they have, uh, critical information at their fingertips of other people. So, anyone just can't do it. So, it is a challenge getting it done. So, we're very proud of that, that we have turned the corner, uh, in nine-one-one. We still have a lot of work to do. Um, to make sure we can maintain, uh, our EMS staffing and we can make sure we maintain our call response time. Well, uh, another department and then, um, public safety courts, we have police, fire, all of these departments. But the Office of Violence Prevention is one that I'm extremely excited about. That was about this prevention deals directly with the prevention. Um, interacting with people in the community, in, in the community. Uh, balancing out, um, uh, the response. And trying to impede in crime before it takes place. Uh, this is something I didn't have as a kid here in St. Louis. Where someone was coming in the community, trying to correct the behavior that causes crime. The Office of Violence Prevention is headed by Mr. Will Pinkley. They have done an outstanding job. Um, they have saved over two thousand man-hours of work. Because when we utilize some of them, especially the behavior, um, of, uh, the behavior health manner. That says that we may not need a police officer. We have a program called Cops and Clinicians. That respond when there's someone with a mental illness that we're responding to for emergency response. So, now we're treating people with a mental illness the way they should be treated. We're bringing a professional to the scene to help talk this person or walk this person down. And we're not asking a law enforcement officer to do what they do. They enforce the law, right? So, we have, we believe made great strides in that. I'm excited about the future and where we can go with it. Um, we do, deal re-entry programs for people coming out of, uh, the correction facility as well. So, how do they get a fresh start coming out? So, Office of Violence Prevention does that and much more that I'll probably get into as we respond to some of the questions. Another important program, uh, point department is the Neighborhood Stabilization Officers. To me, they are the beginning of public safety. These are the people that speak with the community face-to-face. These are the people that help the community resolve issues in their community. Um, they're the point of the spear for us. And one of the things that we recognize, and I think everybody in here, if you live in a community in our city. You know that we have a lot of unreported crime. If you walk outside your home in some blocks, there's something that happened that was an assault or some other crime that the police had never called for. Um, that's one of the goals that we have is trying to accept, take that data, collect it. And do something about it in that community. Because if it's, nothing's done, then no, no changes happened on that block, right? We have a program where we're working with actually the Urban League and the Federation of Block Units. Where we're tracking crime data. We're mapping out the places that invite crime, create crime. And this is that partnership with the community that is needed if we're gonna really make a difference in crime in our city. Uh, the community has to be well vested in it. Um, and I'm excited about this program because this is where I believe that I can bring in the non-reported crime. Non-reported crime so that then we can, uh, take advantage of street lighting. Uh, cameras, knowing where things take place before they take place. So, um, neighborhood stabilization is gonna be a big part of that. Uh, the, uh, gathering of data and mapping it out so that we know where the crime is taking place. Is a big part of how we're looking at, uh, public safety now. Mayor has asked us to reimagine public safety and this is important to start about. Before public safety was when prevention broke down, we responded. But we did nothing before that, uh, to help move forward. Am I close?
Yes. Thank you so much, Director Coyle. I'm glad you brought up community several times. Uh, because that's what's most important here. We have a room full of community that we know we're gonna want to hear from this evening. So, I'm gonna, um, just, I'm just gonna ask all of our colleagues up here. We can just try to catch up on some time to make sure how a lot of time for the community is there. I'm gonna ask the questions, there are leads and follow-ups. Um, but again, some of these answers have already been given in introductions, which is great. And the, and the information has been captured, so you can share it. Please continue to turn in your questions. These questions were compiled already, um, prior to people that signed up for this meeting. And, um, then we're gonna move to the questions that were submitted today. First question, when will the state and local police enforce the law? The, the law for those who don't want or can't pay sales tax to register their vehicles? Can car dealerships collect sales tax as part of sales transactions? The lead is Chief Tracy and the follow-up is President Green.
Yeah, we, we have a, an issue with, uh, expired plates. Uh, I just got here January ninth of last year. And one of the things I saw, a lot of expired plates that are out there and took a good look. What's happening in this state that's different? And what we did see where I've been in three other states is that sales tax is collected before you could pull the car off the lot. And you're given the license. You're not given a thirty-day, uh, expiration tag. And then you go pay it at motor vehicles or the, or the finance department. So, I know the state legislature has started to address this. Where I, I think in twenty-twenty-six, they're gonna start allowing the tax to be collected at the, uh, at the sale. And, and I'm hoping that probably they can fold that into a loan as well. And that's been done in other states to make sure people can make it affordable for individuals to be able to pull that car off the lot. Make sure they're properly licensed. And then make sure that, that we don't have to have additional encounters out on the street because we have an expired tag. Because a person hasn't gotten it registered yet. I think what we have to do is make sure coming out of the pandemic again. Uh, policing across the United States stepped back because their interactions because of the pandemic. Not making sure, making sure we don't infect each other, kind of had us pull back to just necessary performance of duty. And then therefore, it has created, uh, behavior throughout the United States. Where policing is not enforcing traffic violations. So, it's a bit of a perfect storm that's happening. And what I've asked my officers to do is to start looking back at these traffic violations. Because there are people, there's more accidents that are happening. There's more people that are getting hurt. There's pedestrians that are getting hurt. And we have to bring and change behavior back into compliance. So, I'm hoping now that it will change, if you, if you pull off the lot, that will help us. And then secondly, uh, you know, uh, people will talk about, you know, is the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department doing traffic enforcement? Well, this year, we, we issued thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-two moving summonses. And we went to community meetings and we've set up with our traffic division and within our districts. Where are the areas of concern? And I've been throughout this, there are dozens and dozens of meetings. And when I'm at those meetings, uh, our commanders are there. I, I see Christie over here. I see Donell Moore. Our commanders and representatives from our community, our police department are talking with the community. And then when it comes down to how many are we issuing for vehicles that haven't been registered? Uh, we issued seven thousand one hundred and sixty-six summonses for, for vehicles that didn't have proper registration. But the question, second part of the question is if people can't pay sales tax. And, and there's, there's financial issues. That I know the administration is starting to look at potential programs with the treasury. Uh, looking at ways to find programs where we can help those individuals become compliant and secure those plates. With some small-time loans and/or, and in the past, before I got here, there was some people being forgive. There was forgivable summonses that happened in the past because of what we were going through. But now we have to start moving to the future, find ways, and also partner it. Where it's not just, it's not about getting money on moving summers. It's about helping change behavior. And there's a lot of call for everybody to address this issue, which we're listening to. And we have, uh, appropriately tried to balance it with summonses. And then also make sure that, uh, we can get help to the people that need it to make sure that we can get this done. And legislation that I know the state is working on or has already worked on. But it's not gonna come into effect, I think, to January first of twenty-twenty-six.
I'll make it quick because Chief Tracy said most of what, what needed to be said. But I'll say just a few things. When people's tags are expired, it's typically one of four things, right? Either they can't roll the sales tax into it. We know that the state is, is working to take care of it. Second is maybe they need, their car needs to be inspected. They know that it won't pass inspection. There's some issues that need to be made on the car. They can't afford to make the repairs and so they can't get it licensed, right? That's, that's a hardship issue. You have the third group, which is kind of lazy. You know, all of us at one point in time probably have missed filing, you know, for our plates by a day or two or something. And if you haven't, you're, you're really lucky. Um, but a lot of people, they get the thing in the mail and then time life happens. And then they say, oh, wait, I was supposed to do this in April and it's May or it's June now. And then the fourth are the people that are putting on the fake plates that are trying to evade the law. And trying to cover up who they are or, you know, doing something different. So, the key is addressing the first three helps us then use police resources to get at the fourth, which is actually the problem, right? So, our office has been in conversations with the mayor's office, with the treasurer's office. And hoping that we can come forth with some kind of, um, revolving loan fund or, or something like that. That can help folks that have the financial hardships, um, in, in not being able to get compliant. And then the hope is between the state law and a local loan fund. If it becomes more of the norm that you need to have your tags on your vehicle. Then the folks that are just lazy start to get into compliant because they realize, oh, there might actually be some repercussion for this if I, if I don't do it. Which then makes it easier for Chief Tracy and his officers to actually go after the folks with the fake plates. And who are actually, um, evading the law through, through what they're doing. So, it, we've heard for years that this is, um, this is a challenge for a lot of folks. It's top of mind. Uh, but I think that there's some good solutions that are in the pipeline. And it's even more helpful that the state has finally gotten on board and decided that they wanted to help as well.
Yeah, real, real briefly, we are working with, um, state representatives and some of our state senators. To do a one-time temp tag amnesty. We gotta do something that's very, very revolutionary. So, we're, we're working with the state now and please call your state representative and call your state senator. Because it's moving through that slow process. But we want to give individuals who have not paid their sales tax, an opportunity to come forward. Just like we used to do amnesty back in the day with our warrants. Remember that? We want to now do it with temp tags. So, bring your expired tag, bring your driver's license. And we're proposing that you get a ninety-day grace period to make good on your taxes. After, after that, the chief's gonna have something for you.
All right, second question. Homicides are down twenty-four, twenty-one percent in twenty-twenty-three. And other violent crimes between twelve and fifteen percent. At the same time, the city jail population has nearly doubled from four hundred and thirty-seven on January first, twenty-twenty-three. To nine hundred and fifty-two on January first, twenty-twenty-four. Is there a relationship between the two or is this just coincidence that the lead is Chief Tracy? The follow-up is Circuit Attorney Gore.
Well, first of all, taking a look at us being down twenty-one percent down in homicides. I, I talked about that being progress. Hundred and fifty-eight murders this year. But that wasn't just done with policing alone. That was done with a lot of programs that we talked about, working with our partners. And then making sure to identifying the individuals. It's a very small percentage of individuals out there committing, uh, ninety percent of the crime. And, uh, we want to make sure that we're identifying those individuals. And I think because we've done that and the trust in the community, uh, our clearance rates are at seventy-five percent. Uh, for homicide clearance rates, which is, is probably leading the nation for, for a city our size. And so, there's a lot of things that are going on with progress that we can build off of. But when you take a look at crime being down, I think the correlation that it might be up in the jail population. Is that, uh, when Circuit Attorney Gore opened up, I don't want to put, uh, it might, Circuit Attorney Gore might have a different explanation for the. But from what I see is that, uh, there was sixty-seven hundred, uh, pending application for warrant service out there. For individuals, that's sixty, it's not sixty-seven individual people. Some of them were arrested multiple times, up to eight, nine, ten, eleven times and never charged. Because they were released because they were never charged. And I think what's happening now, since the warrant offices opened. Where now people are being charged and then we can look at diversion, we can get court-ordered treatment, we can look at all these things. I think we can get to those diversion programs once somebody's in the system that's been arrested eight or nine times. So, now they're being, they're actually being charged and then we can work on those individuals to see exactly what's going wrong. And make sure that we can try to make them, uh, coming, uh, coming back into the system. Uh, I believe that is, is probably contributing. Because the arrests that we're making is the same amount of arrests that we've made in years past. Actually, we're down a little bit this year because, I think because we were arresting the same person multiple times. And now that they're actually being charged, they're going into the system. And therefore, we can look to get diversion, court-ordered treatment and all those things. So, I really believe it's because the system now has, has now charging individuals instead of releasing them right back on the street. Which was being done, uh, uh, when I first got here.
Can I jump in real quick? Uh, corrections is under public safety as well. So, I wanted to correct something in the question. Last year, the population was four hundred and ninety-eight. This year is six hundred and forty-four, nine, nine hundred. So, I want to correct that. So, we're not thinking that the population has doubled because it is not. The jail population is six hundred and forty, CJC is six hundred and forty-four people. The capacity is right at a thousand. Uh, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. That's okay. That's capacity. No, that, that, that is wrong. The jail population, I get the figures daily. The jail population is six hundred and forty-four. And January first of last year, the jail population was four hundred and ninety-eight. So, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I wanted to make sure we clarified that.
And, and Director, I'm just working up the numbers, just if there is an increase, possibly because of people being charged. So, I'm kind of looking at this just from, is there a correlation or a coincidence? But, uh, I, I just wanted to make sure people understood that more people are being charged now, uh, on their original arrest. Or there was individuals out there that would be in arrest eight, nine, ten times and never be in charge. And now they are being charged when they're arrested.
So, so, um, and I'll, and I'll just follow up. The, the relationship between the homicide rate and, and charging decisions. I, I do believe there's a relationship there. I believe that when you have, as, as Chief Tracy pointed out. We know that a very small percentage of people are the people who are committing gun violence and committing violent crimes. And if you are not enforcing the laws and holding people accountable when they commit violent crimes. Then it is reasonable to believe that they're going to continue to commit violent crimes. If you have an environment in which people believe that they can commit violent crimes with impunity. You're going to have more violent crimes. So, I, I do think that our office stepping in and effectively prosecuting violent crime. Has had a direct impact in saving lives in a, in a couple ways. One, communicating to those who might engage in that type of conduct, that they will be held accountable. And so, they should think twice about it. But secondly, there's people who are gonna engage in violent crime and gun violence no matter what. And they're being removed and they're being detained and they're being held in the city jailed until they're tried and, and their case is resolved. So, um, I, I think there is a correlation. Exactly what that is, I don't know. Um, effective prosecution is not the sole answer. As we've been talking about, you need a combination of prevention, intervention, um, enforcement. So, um, it's gonna take all those things. Um, and, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna play our, our, our part in that, that system. So it's going to take all those things and, you know, we're going to play our part in that system.
Thank you so much. Again, out of respect for people's time and hopefully you understand, President Green, I'm going to move some of this around because some of these questions are specific and with a room full of people, we want to make sure we address citywide concerns. So I'm going to actually combine this with one of the questions that were placed in also today. How does the city measure the effectiveness of its public safety and court diversion initiatives? How is that information shared with the public? And also what are the resources for people if they feel their case and not have a fair treatment or judgment? The lead is Dr., I'm sorry, the lead is Dr. Coyle, the follow-up is Circuit Attorney Gore.
Okay, thank you. I think striking that balance between prevention, intervention and enforcement is the key. You know, I mentioned to you the things that OVP are doing to help out with that problem. The way we recognize whether we're doing something right is if we're reducing the number of man-hours we're having to spend in enforcement. If we're spending the correct number of hours in prevention and intervention, then that reduces the number of hours that we have to spend in enforcement. And I think that's better for everyone when we do that. So for public safety, we do measure the hours that we send out with the cops and clinicians to determine if there are incidents where we have possibly saved a life because we have a professional clinician going to deal with the mental health issue. So I believe that's how we look at whether it's effective or not. Can we get our population down? Hopefully, we're working on that. We are seeing some numbers move now in corrections where our population is going down. But they are arrested a lot of people and they go from an arrestee with the police department to a detainee with the justice center. And so we look at the detainees in the justice center. Those are their, the people that have actually been accepted as a detainee and they're awaiting their trial or anything else that they have to deal with with the courts.
Yeah, and on the diversion, I'll just say when I took over as Circuit Attorney, our diversion program that existed at the time was really, it involved 40 people. There was no effective measurement of the results of that program. There was really not a robust diversion program in place. We have been working to put that in place for the past seven months. We now have a team in place. We have the largest diversion unit that the office has ever had. We have two attorneys and three caseworkers. And we intend to be implementing a diversion program that, you know, six months from now will be somewhere in the neighborhood of 250 to 400 participants. Our diversion program is going to be different than the pre-existing diversion program in a few ways. Most importantly, a part of our diversion program, we're going to work hard to connect those participating in the program with the services they need to take their lives down a path where they can be more productive and not be perpetually or habitually engaged with the criminal justice system. So we're going to be working closely with community organizations like St. Patrick's Center, Places for People, the Missouri Trust. So we're going to be doing that. And secondly, our program is going to be, it's going to be a big component of, it's going to be a pre-plea program. So we're going to have people going into diversion without ever having to participate in the criminal justice system and thereby avoiding the harms that can be caused by getting engaged with the criminal justice system, having to plead guilty to a felony, having to have your work disrupted because there are certain jobs you can't hold while you have a felony conviction. So by having our program be a pre-plea program, which hasn't previously existed in the Circuit Attorney's Office, we're going to really give people an opportunity to, you know, to have a true second chance to go down a more productive path in their life. So we're eager to get that implemented, it's in place. And when it is up, we're going to measure effectiveness by looking at recidivist rates and outcomes based on who we have participating in the program. That's something we're going to monitor closely. Right now, to be honest with you, there is no mechanism within our office to do that, but we're going to put those things in place.
And what about for if people felt like they had unfair treatment out of the Circuit Attorney's Office for their case? Is there some in the office for them?
So depending, I mean, so that's a broad question, but I will generally say that our victim services office has been restaffed. I, for the first time in many years, the Circuit Attorney's Victim Services Office is fully staffed. I am, and my attorneys are always available to discuss with people any concerns they have about cases. So we certainly want to be transparent and open to listening to any concerns anyone raises.
Okay, thank you. Next question, which I know is going to be important for a lot of us in the room, especially the mothers and fathers, grandmothers, is how or what plans do you have to address violence, youth violence and crime here in this year as we begin the year? Well, the lead is Dr. Punch and the follow-up is Dr. Coyle, I'm sorry, Director Coyle.
I was down there in the room where the television was down there and you have people in the hall behind this wall who are trying to hear. The speakers either need to speak louder, there's places that can't, but there's a guard who wouldn't let them in. So if you, there's empty seats I see here and there. If you could just let them in, they're trying to hear, but we can't hear because the speakers also, their mics are far away from them. Even when the commissioner spoke, his mic is too far away. We need to hear the voice.
Thank you so much, ma'am. If there are people outside that can come in and take the seats, we'll definitely, please let's direct our voices. And I was just informed that the TVs and everything are back working down there and also it's being aired. If someone can direct them on their phones, they can pick it up on YouTube live on their phones as well out there. Dr. Punch, thank you.
First, I want to acknowledge homicide as the most pressing and concerning form of violence. And if you have been directly impacted and lost a loved one, will you please stand up so we can honor and recognize you? Right. And I'm sure there are many more of you who have been close to those who have lost their lives or been impacted by bullets. We honor you today.
Yes, amen.
Thank you. Have a seat. I have stood in front of a mother, came for her body while she stands there with her five-year-old child, who was one inch away from the path of the bullet that struck her. The same bullet that went through his father and ended his life and threatened the life of that child's unborn sister. Four people, one bullet. And the only place that that family could sit and have peace, just for a minute to be able to breathe and hear their concerns, was my clinic. And we can talk about who needs to be brought to justice, but it is sick to me. The amount of pain and suffering that are in the bodies of people in St. Louis and so little resource available. We got to fix that. I know your bio plan is, because I live it every day. And if you don't know, come by, I'll tell you more and you'll find me. Not only me, but a whole bunch of people who are sacrificing their lives and not just us, but groups like Freedom Community Center and groups like Diamond Divas and groups like Dream Builders for Equity and groups like St. Louis Storytellers and every block and every person, every mama and a grandma, the whole space for that healing. My plan, so the issue of violence is to name it first of all and to recognize the unhealed wounds that are in the bodies. If no one got shot again ever in St. Louis, we would have enough pain to fuel generations of trauma. We got to heal that and heal that right now. So my group has a yesterday, today and tomorrow plan. Yesterday, we focused on education, recognizing school nurses in schools, play and education as a core component of how to at least bring awareness to youth. As I said, today, we have now hosted 3,000 visits in three years in a free clinic for mamas and babies, uncles and grandfathers and people who have had their pain unaddressed for too long. But in the future, we are calling on every place in space to acknowledge that pain, to send us those patients, to send us those families and for the city and the business community to properly invest in all of the people pressing hard, squeezing out the blood from their very hearts to show up for those kids. It's not enough. And everyone who just stood up and told you about the life that was lost in their home and their family knows all too well the price to pay if we don't invest right now. So I appreciate very much to be sitting at this table and I appreciate the fact that actually, Mr. Gore, your folks are coming to my clinic tomorrow. And last week, your folks, Director Coyle, let me come out and bring resources. And the week after that, it's going to be more and more and more opportunities to collaborate because we're done doing this in an isolated, siloed way. I don't care if you come to it from the island of health or the island of justice. Safety is where we have to meet. So that is our plan and that is our intention. And we need most of all the community to get behind it and insist that the cycle of violence ends.
I heard Dr. Punch, my name is John, I heard Dr. Punch speak at the Crime Summit. And I made sure I stuck around and meeting because I felt it was something that the Fire Department EMS needed to be a part of. And this is what he just spoke with you about. If we can do something to intervene in that type of damage, those types of injuries, then the fire services are the first to hear it. The Fire Department sees some of the worst we have in this city. We see some of the people that are doing bad, some of the people that are injured, some of the people that no one else sees, we see. And this was a great opportunity for us to partner with someone where we could make an impact, especially with younger people dealing with gunshot wounds and just make a difference overall in dealing with public safety. That's part of the prevention part. But when we can get out and speak with them, be a part of these programs, it makes it much better, especially when you have a public and private partnership to address crime.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move and again combine some questions that we received this evening and one of the pre-registered questions. The alternatives are being, what alternatives are being considered to ensure a reduction in reckless driving and traffic violence? Is there an opportunity to address traffic violence and reckless driving as a public health issue rather than a public safety issue? Of course, we also receive questions about our cameras, the law enforcement, the unused cameras and the rerouted cameras and drones and other things that we've been able to use robotics, especially in the city, especially on our major thoroughfares. And I'm going to combine this question also with the public safety that we put policy in down at the Board of Aldermen such as road die, speed, you know, the different things that we can do. So the lead answer to that will come from President Green and it'll be followed up by Director Coyle. I'll also ask if Chief Tracy could speak to traffic enforcement as well.
Sure. So when we're looking at traffic violence in the city, we have to look at it through three different lanes, so to speak. The first, infrastructure, right? A lot of our streets in the city in particular are very wide. They were built when we had trolleys going up and down them. Those trolleys are long gone, which have made them into highways in some ways and places that they should not be highways. So the first is infrastructure. And the Board of Aldermen, with the support of Mayor Jones, just about a year ago, passed a historic infrastructure bill that is funding about $40 million into traffic calming around major thoroughfares throughout the city. So that is in progress. The second piece is education. Education is hard in Missouri. We're one of the only states that does not require driver's education for drivers. I grew up in upstate New York. If you wanted to get your license when you were 16, you were required to take driver's ed. Otherwise, you had to wait until you were 17 to get your license. So it was a really big incentive to take it and it was free. It was free through the public schools. So you didn't have a lot of excuse not to take it as one of your classes. We don't have that here. And so that means the city of St. Louis, we have to figure out how we can do that here. And then the third piece of that is the enforcement piece. And that's, you know, recognizing that we don't want to get into a place where we are, you know, overpolicing, you know, traffic violations. But we also recognize that there are a lot of people in the city that are running red lights, that are driving 60 miles an hour on side streets and are engaging in erratic behavior and there has to be some enforcement for that. And so we do have a bill for, that would enable automatic traffic enforcement policies through the city. And the thing that the Board of Aldermen is working to do is to make sure that as we deploy technologies like that, we are doing so in a way that we are protecting people's privacy and civil liberties alongside that. Because we do know that data collection, data retention of, you know, movements through a city is potentially invasive, right? And so our job as a legislative branch is to create that balance and make sure that we can do the enforcement, but do it in a way that is not going to provide undue harm to folks in our community and that some of those resources that are generated through an automated traffic enforcement program can then go to fund things like driver's education and to, and fund neighborhood traffic calming measures so that we can put more speed humps and bump outs and things like that into neighborhoods where we're seeing the speeding happen, happening too. So it's, there's a number of different approaches. All of them have to happen in order to, I think, cut down on some of the reckless driving in the city.
My followings. The only thing that I will add to what President Green said is that we have and have to continue to identify high traffic corners, high crash rates, certain intersections, certain corners, so we can begin to correct it. This is part of that $40 million plan for traffic calming. Most of us know that there are intersections in our city that are prone to crime, that are easier for car crashes to take place. So that's the, just a high-risk area. So I wanted to make sure I brought that out. I know the mayor is going to cover more of this tomorrow in her public safety address. So I would ask that you attend that as well. Well, I wanted to mention that education-wise, we received a grant, the City Dad, from the Department of Transportation, Missouri Department of Transportation for driver's training for high school kids. This is a big, important program to me where we're going to be working with youth within the city of St. Louis to help them get driver's education and eventually get their driver's license. So I think that's a good start when we think about the process of preventing, intervening when it comes to crime and other things because we're witnessing how some people are driving. So this gives us an opportunity to give some kids the education they need to help get their driver's license and make sure that we have people on the road that are trying to be safer than not. Thank you.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, it may be, I'll speak with you after. We'll take a look at it, but I know what the population is. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Chief Tracy.
You know, we're looking at trying to educate and prevention and then education about driving habits, trying to change behavior. And one of them is enforcement. And being at all the community meetings, one of the major things that was always in the top three at every community meeting I've gone to was traffic enforcement. And can you please do something about people that are driving recklessly and at the same time, expired tags? So we're hearing you. So we're hearing you, we're out in some of these areas in the communities. We have rolling, uh, traffic enforcement with our traffic department, working with our district, and, you know, just for the year, we're, we're up from last year, uh, just a little over about thousand summonses from where we were at last year, moving summonses is thirty-two thousand six hundred and sixty-two. So I, I said that number earlier, we are out there doing that, but if we can hit it from both ends, then the people that are really going to break the law, that'll be less, and then we can look at some of those issues and hopefully, uh, change behavior of those individuals that are left continuing not to obey traffic laws.
Does the city have any engineers to take a look at properties like forty-three-hundred Goodfellow, where the traffic light still stops us, three thousand federal employees are no longer there, the left and right turn signals come on, who wouldn't want around the red light over there? Seven public schools closed, and stop signs still facing the people. We still have to stop and obey the law. It doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I agree with that, ma'am, and I share your frustration. I would encourage us to look at spaces like that, excuse me, um, re- first report them to our, uh, respect of all the persons so that they can look at, and then, and there's proper channels, yeah, and then we can look at, and then follow up with it. Thank you so much. We need to make sure that it goes, I know that the citizens, yes, ma'am, the city ser- the Citizen Service Bureau along with your neighborhood improvement specialists are all working hard and diligently, and I think that there, there are some in the room, so if you're in the earshot, please make sure that you can follow up with her afterwards, especially if you're in the respective areas that she mentioned, so that we can address that. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, next question, no problem, ma'am. Our next question, um, how are the police department and the circuit attorney's office seeking to work together more productively? Uh, the lead is Circuit Attorney Gore, and the follow-up is Chief Tracy.
Well, when I, um, took over Circuit Attorney, that was really one of the, the highest things on my list, was to really build a, a productive collaborative relationship with, uh, the St. Louis Police Department. Obviously, you know, we're not gonna be effective as an office unless we have a relationship with the St. Louis Police Department that's built on, uh, professional respect, um, and cooperation. So, um, you know, I met, uh, Chief Tracy at my, uh, swearing-in, uh, he made a point to be there, and, uh, we were able to meet in person later that week, and have had several, uh, meetings and discussions since. Um, our offices have been working well together, and we continue to collaborate on, um, on issues. Probably the biggest, um, place where we've seen that relationship, um, come back strong is in terms of we reopened the Warren Office, and so now what we have is on a daily basis, we have the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department officers coming down to our Warren Office, moving with us, um, applying on cases, and we're having that interaction, um, on a daily basis, which enables us to make, you know, better charging decisions, be more aware of the evidence, and really just build a, um, relationship between our office and the police department, where they understand what it takes to make a case. So, uh, we've had cooperation up and down the ranks, it's been, um, very good and very productive, and I look forward to, uh, continuing to build on that relationship.
And, and following up with the Circuit Attorney, yes, uh, soon as he was sworn-in, we, we scheduled to meet, uh, that week or the next week after that, and it was supposed to be an hour meeting. Three hours later, we were still talking at a conference table about how we can look to improve things, because in the criminal justice system, you know, you get judicial, prosecutor, prosecutors, and also law enforcement, uh, w- we're gonna have professional differences, but we still have to work together, and there's going to be, uh, differences of ideas. And what I've found is that as, as the Circuit Attorney is bringing in new lawyers or some that used to be in the office, uh, I also have change in personnel. So what we need to do is make sure that our, our leaders that we count on underneath are all speaking to each other, and we did talk about the Circuit Attor-, uh, the Warren Office, that's been closed for several years. It started with, uh, the pandemic and closing, and then opened that back up, you can really have, uh, that, that communication back and forth where there's not frustration between our law enforcement officers and, and the prosecutors, because we're actually having a conversation, and then even if charges are, are, are not charged and/or dropped, one of the things that we look at is that, did we have a conversation? And that happens everywhere, and, and the officers feel at least they had a say after they went through the possibility of making an arrest, making sure their voice was heard instead of, uh, not having someone charged at all. So that was big, and then we continue to meet, uh, if there is an issue that does come up, sometimes there's conversations that, uh, myself and the Circuit Attorney will iron those things out, uh, because that's the way relationships work, and, and, uh, I appreciate his time being able to take my calls, uh, if I have an issue, and I do the same for him, and see if we can iron out those things behind closed doors.
Okay, I know there are organizations that do this work daily and been doing it selflessly and thanklessly, like Diamond Diva Empowerment Foundation and the Urban League, but now here recently, there's been an uptick, clearly too many lives have been taken away too soon by their partners, and what can we do to support the efforts and the work, uh, as a community to stop this violence, uh, against women and against their partners? The lead is James Clark and Dr. Punch, and the follow-up will be President Green.
I can say that, right now, we are working with relocating two young ladies, uh, one after her significant other decided to shoot up her house, and then another one whose, um, domestic issue showed up at her worksite. Um, it's one thing to see it bubbling in the community and see it on the news, but it's another thing when it shows up on your phone and in your office two and three times every day. We've got to do more. We have got to be able to communicate emphatically with our young men the way that it used to be. See, when I was coming up, we didn't fight girls. You didn't, you didn't put your hands on a young lady, and if you had a fight with a young lady in grade school, that followed you all the way to high school. You know he fight girls. So, so family, we gotta get, we gotta do some basic things to communicate expectations, social expectations to our young people in an effective way. We are overthinking some of this stuff, y'all. We're overthinking some of this stuff. The best way to address speeding is to come up with a very, very vivid campaign, as vivid as the video games that they get addicted to speeding playing. Y'all, we're overthinking this stuff. We're working right now to come up with an effective marketing campaign called Drive Fast, Car Crash. And we're gonna be on social media with it, we're gonna, we're gonna work with, 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 uh, car lots to give us torn-up cars that we can place on a high-profile vacant lot, and put the sign above it, Drive Fast, Car Crash. In St. Louis, you can't drive two blocks without seeing a bumper, a headlight, a fender. You can't. But let me get back to the question, brothers and sisters, we have a domestic violence surge that I think is, might become the new norm if we don't get on top of it. We work closely with Diamond Divas, but Diamond Divas need their budget tripled. They do a, they, uh, do a phenomenal job, so, so on the, on the domestic violence issue, it breaks my heart, but we've gotta really begin to put the resources where they need and get the resources to the people who deal with it every day. Yes.
Mr. Clark and I are intensely agreeing on this, uh, I can't say enough about the groups that have already been mentioned that do this work, but they do not have the support they need. I do wanna also just take the question a step further, not to reduce the importance of the issue of domestic violence in the lives of women, but I can't tell you how many men I know in my clinic have been shot by their partners and abused as children. I can't tell you how many children I have in my clinic who've been shot by their parents. Really, the issue is what it is when unhealed trauma intensifies, builds up, and adds generation over generation inside of family. So that five-year-old I talked about was in my clinic, in ten years is in Attorney Gore's office, and then ten years after that is on the block overdosing.
That's true.
We have a decision to make, because I think a lot of this, yes, there's prevention work that needs to happen through enforcement, yes, there's work that needs to happen to redirect the thoughts and lines and hearts of people, but, man, we need to deeply invest in the lives of our children who are bearing witness to all of this trauma day to day.
Yes, yes.
It is, if you could only imagine and see what I see in the bodies of three-year-olds hitting, acting out, completely unable to hold still because they have overdosed on trauma already. So for me, it's really an issue of family violence, and what it is to have a home that does not have peace, and that's gonna take intense investment from all of us.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dr. Punch, and thank you, um, James Clark. You know, many of you know, um, at least at the Board of Aldermen, this is an issue that's really personal to me. I'm one of the one-in-three people who is a survivor of intimate partner violence, and the only thing that really kept me in that relationship for longer than I should have been was not knowing where I was going to go. I, you know, had moved to a city where I didn't have family, um, I had pets that I didn't wanna leave behind, there was a lot of things that were keeping me in that place even though it was not safe for me. And one of the things that we still continue to struggle with as a community is making space for folks who don't have anywhere else to go, and that means that we need to be opening more shelters in this city. We know that, um, intimate partner violence is the number-one reason women and children become homeless, is because they are fleeing that violence. And so when we have a, a city that has had processes in place that has made it, um, impossible for a homeless shelter to make it through that process to open in the last fifteen years, we have to recognize, we have to change those systems, right? And so that's the conversations we've been having at the Board of Aldermen, and we tried, um, earlier this, or last year, the media kinda took it by storm and focused it on public urination rather than focusing it on housing, um, but we're gonna bring it back, because we know that a big part of safety in our community is housing stability, and a bit, we also know that one in five kids in St. Louis public schools is unhoused, right? Or they're, they're housing insecure, and that breeds cycles of violence and insecurity when you don't know where you are going to sleep that night, and you wake up somewhere where you're not sure where you are the next day. So that is top priority for the Board of Aldermen, we are, um, we want to get that done before this session ends in April, um, and I also wanna uplift in that, not just opening shelters, but opening shelters that meet the diverse needs of folks in our community. Uh, you know, I, I stood with Women's Safe House not too long ago when they were announcing that, um, in one of their shelters, they were opening up a kennel so that, um, people fleeing violence could actually take their pets with them and know that their pets were going to be cared for, and so recognizing that we don't need just more shelters, we need ones that meet people where they are, that address the unique needs that they have that are, um, that they're bringing into that situation, including their pets, and including non-traditional relationships, you know, a, a lot of times, people also don't wanna go into shelters because they might be in a family situation that is not the typical situation that, you know, society deems, right? Um, but we have a responsibility, I think, to house everyone. At the Board, we have made this the year of the tenant, we are focusing on housing, focusing on tenant legislation, we'll be having a number of tenant rights bills coming up, uh, in the next, uh, month or so as well, uh, because we know the foundation for safety for a lot of people is housing security, and the more we can get people, um, safe and secure in their homes, the more we know that we can, um, have a, a greater impact on reducing violence, particularly intimate partner violence.
That was a good segue into, uh, one of the next questions was, uh, around unhoused neighbors and expanding shelter capacity, but before we circle into that, because I would want Dr. Punch to, um, follow up on that since you already segwayed into it, I wanna circle back to a question that was offered today, um, in this domestic violence and family violence space. Chief Tracy, how or, or how the police train to deal with domestic violence in orders of protection?
So when we come across, uh, domestic violence, uh, we're looking at these reports as they happen, uh, immediately, we have, within our detective bureau, we have, uh, our domestic violence response team, and when it rises to a level of this type of domestic violence in partners, uh, or even children, we make sure we send them out in addition to the police officers taking the report, and we make the referral immediately because we know how fast domestic violence and the emotion can really turn into violence very quickly. So we do have a specialized unit that actually goes out, and then in the morning, when we're reading the reports, one of the first things, you know, I look at shootings, I look at homicides, uh, I prioritize things, but right up there pri- we would prioritize is domestic violence, and they know right away, I have the commander of the domestic, uh, uh, violence response team, uh, they're, they're actually right there in that meeting, and I'm asking that question, what happened? And if that person's not there, I'm talking to the commander, I'm talking to the major, uh, Doniel Moore's here, uh, Christie Marks, I just saw her, they know I'm gonna ask that question, did this rise to the level, and if not, what are we doing for that person that's involved in this situation to make sure that this doesn't escalate? And are they getting the services from victim services to make sure we can guide them, to make sure that we can protect them, and then find the other services to keep them safe, whether it's relocation, it's whether the services that you talked about, President Green, and we make sure, we might not be able to do it, but we certainly are gonna guide them to where they can get the services that they need.
Talking about safety in houses, I had two brothers that was murdered, the case was dismissed in his own house, the case was dismissed, my family tried to come and speak with the prosecuting office, and we got treated like we was nobody. Speaking about safety in houses, my brother, my brother was murdered in his own house, and the case got dismissed.
And also, my child's father was about to barricade me inside of the police station three years ago in downtown St. Louis. He was allowed to do that, and just recently, my, my same child's father came up to my apartment, I, both times I had an order of protection, and your officers did nothing. So my question was, how do they handle, how, uh, how are they being trained to handle order of protection, and how are your officers being held accountable when the fault is on them? Because this last time, your officers never asked me my name, I even showed her my email address, I even told her that I was going to email the mayor's secretary. Guess what? They went back and lied to the prosecuting attorney, said that I, and said that I gave them my wrong name, which was a lie.
I wanna ask, um, before you address that, Chief Tracy, and I know because of serving with the entities in place with these kind of family violence, um, situations, I don't want him to even attempt to try to address any kind of body-specific information in their specific instances, out of protection, not only are we in this room, but this is being aired live stream all across whoever's watching, we just don't know, and out of protection, not only for you first and foremost, I'm gonna ask Chief Tracy if maybe someone maybe, um, Major Moore now can move her to the side and speak with her?
What we can do, and we would like to get that specific information, because the only way I can see or take care of things and correct some of the action, I've been here a year, so if I hear things, I have to address them, I gotta take a look, there's a specific incident, but I will take a look at that and, and speak with you privately, because talking about domestic violence and we are in the public right now, I wanna make sure that everybody's protected, and I wanna make sure your privacy is protected as well, and you.
And we also, uh, Circuit Attorney Gore has representation from his office as well, sis, so maybe you can connect with her.
We can, we can make a room available to you to talk to the chief today.
And also, we went down to get a police report, and documents have been hidden and removed on my citizen.
What they also do is they tell you that we don't have to write up a police report before we arrive, they never even wrote up a police report at all. This is why I had asked, why are your officers not being held accountable for the things that they do? Because the first time my child was born, the first time he was born, the police officer said that, and he was important. I even said that he used to be held accountable too, I can have to pass, but the original person who was acting to the side of the police station for hours to happen, did not face any charges, did not face a suspension or anything else. So therefore, nobody's writing up police reports unless somebody got a shot, which is not fair.
Thank you so much, thank you.
I'm, I'm not scared because I'm speaking up for my brothers who can't speak for themselves, because this was a racial. because this was a racially unjust situation. And the person that murdered my brothers was a white male. He's, he, he's released from jail. He's free to walk about his life. So I'm not scared because they didn't protect my family, but they protected him.
And I'm not afraid to speak out about this because it's something that needs to be aired out. It's something that needs to be told because the officers are not knowing what they're supposed to do. And I'm, I'm tired of having to deal with this and the officers going about lying, not knowing what they're supposed to do and get women of domestic violence, not just me. The whole women of domestic violence have suffered at the hands of your officers and their children.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask respectfully, yes, I know, I, I'm gonna ask respectfully because again, I'm gonna be honest, there were specific questions on here to specific instances. But in a room full of this in this entire city, sis, we have to be able to address some of the things that are going on here and then connect you directly with somebody that can address your case and address your. Here in a public setting, now you, now you're a step closer, I'm gonna tell you. Because it's all public, it's being aired, it's on the news, it's on YouTube, it's everywhere. So it's public information. Nobody is gonna leave out this room and forget about you, I promise. Okay, so we're gonna move to, I want to allow Dr. Punch to follow up on the unhoused conversation that President Green started.
Three months into my education as a doctor in medical school, I took a class on what was called homelessness in medicine. And I was told the root cause of the issue of people being in houses is greed. Greed. G-R-E-E-D. So if we have an issue with homelessness, we can go, if we have the right to a mirror that's ours, so we can call ours and look at it and see someone looking back, that's the root of homelessness. I mean, real talk. Homelessness can be addressed through housing. Everything else that happens after that, we have the resources we need to address it. But there are not adequate, affordable, accessible, either temporary shelters, as President Green has mentioned, or affordable housing for people to get into. Without that, we will continue to deal with the long-term consequences of that injustice and that greed and all of the ways it presents in terms of crime and disease. And we can rinse, repeat, rinse, repeat all we want, but this city has to decide if that matters or not. If we don't want it to matter, we can try to contain people and confine the consequences of poverty, but it won't work. So, so that's just, that's just the baseline. I refuse to have a conversation about it without recognizing the baseline that greed is the cause of homelessness. Having said that, I do think that there are a lot of options for people who are unhoused that can be provided so that they have the power to create their own health, their own forward way, their own stability, if we will stop canceling people who are unhoused as less than human. I can't tell you the disdain that I see for people, interacting with people as they bear witness to someone who doesn't have a shelter and doesn't have a place to call their own. Everyone has a home, by the way, just not everybody has a house. So I just, I think, I think the important thing, though, is to focus on providing, as we're working on the housing issue, harm reduction services that reduce the harm of the environment, reduce the harm of infection, reduce the harm of injuries, and reduce the harm of malnutrition. Because I have literally amputated body parts from people that have fallen off and died because they've been exposed to colds. This is not theoretical for me. So I will continue with our work that does street outreach. Again, as I said earlier, over twenty thousand points of contact in the last three years with people who are housing insecure, providing them medical care, food, connections to services, and even a place to drop in and stay warm and get resources. But I am one of a few groups of people who are working really, really, really hard to address those unmet needs, and it's not enough. And I really stand in solidarity with President Green about the need to create, until we have the housing problem fixed, shelter so people don't die in the colds.
Thank you, thank you so much. We're gonna circle back to a couple of questions. Sorry, President and CEO of Urban League, Mike McMillan, who is watching, has granted us some additional time to close out with these questions. And then I'm asking anybody who has not submitted their questions that you have, we said in the beginning, we knew everything wouldn't get answered within this time, but please submit it because the President's office is committed to making sure that we follow up and address those questions. And we will make sure, Thuricon is passing out sheets now, if you haven't submitted one, because after these two questions, we'll go ahead and close. We'll get some questions. And I, I would be remiss if I didn't let this question because I know, if you can write it down, Mr. Morrow, because I know education is a big piece. Okay, okay, well, we'll get to that one then. Okay, given the fact that there's a crisis in the city jail, which we've heard from Tracy and others in the room, and people have died, how can we keep CJC residents safe? The lead is Dr. Director Coyle, and Mr. Clark, we're asking for you to follow up. Given the fact that there's a crisis in the city jail and people have died, how can we keep CJC residents safe?
Good, thanks for the question. I have addressed this question both in the media on a couple of occasions. When we think about, you know, we utilize the deaths in CJC and sometimes people want to bring attention to that, and that's their right. But I think they need to understand what has taken place. The Justice Center is a microcosm of our city, right? The Justice Center is a microcosm of our city. It's just like our city, right? What we have in our city, we have in the Justice Center, right? All right, so now, when we look at the deaths that have taken place in the Justice Center, and I've looked at each one of them, there were fifteen from 2020, all right? So believe me, I looked at them. The largest number of deaths were from natural causes, all right? I, listen to me now, this is what, please, 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 listen to me. Please, listen to me.
You're turning off the water inside of CJC.
Okay, but I.
You are not seating with your bare hands. You're CJC.
Okay, all right. Let, when you let me, we have not had twelve in two years, but we had fifteen.
They don't want to take care of these people when they come in. I know, I'm going to jail twice a year. And I know it's not possible. And these might go to jail twice a year because I got to be in my cell.
Okay, please let me finish. Well, I, well, please let me finish. I didn't make that decision, the coroner did. I'm reading from a coroner's report. All right, I'm reading from a, well, I'm gonna, I'll get to that too, if you let me. So let me, let me get this out. Well, when you say that, let me get what I want to say, please, just be patient with me, all right? So five of them, the coroner said, were from natural causes. These are people that were sick when they came in. We don't make that decision, ma'am. No, we don't make that decision. Whoever you sent. Well, let me, let me finish, let, let me finish, please. Whoever we are sent, we must take into the Justice Center. We can't let someone out, we can't refuse anyone. Well, okay, that's fine, let me finish, please. I haven't gotten that far. Just be patient with me and let me finish.
Talk faster.
Okay, I'll talk faster. Four of them, we do have, we had four suicides that were not on suicide watch and they had no work.
No, I just gotta, I need to, I need to slow down, I can't do this. I, I can't, I can't, I can't, these are human beings. And I, and maybe this isn't a fair, I'm sorry, no, no, no. I, I'm just saying, maybe this is not the form, with all the respect, I'm sorry. I can't, I can't, I can't bear witness to this. These are human beings, and maybe we need a separate, but this is not okay. I, as a physician and as a community leader, I don't want, this is not okay. This is, this is not an okay conversation. It's dangerous, it's disrespecting the lives that have been lost. You don't have the proper forum, and people aren't able to make their concerns be heard. I cannot participate.
Okay, thank you. We don't want to, we'll go ahead and, Director Coyle, we'll go ahead and shift because we know that there are other forums where we can have this, continue to have this conversation, which is down at the Public Safety Committee. Down at the Public Safety Committee, we can have this continued conversation. We'll let Mr. Clark, because we do want to respect everyone's time here. And there are a few more questions that people have for the greater good here, for the, our entire city. And so with that being said, thank you for always showing up. Thank you for always sharing your concerns. Nobody's quieting, nobody's trying to not let you speak. But if we ever want to move forward, we have to be able to communicate respectfully with each, with each other so we can hear each other. I, when we ask questions, if you don't listen for the answer, how are we ever gonna work? How are we ever gonna meet in the middle?
I agree with you, but we need our, our, the people who work for the city, we need transparency.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We are not getting that. We just sat here and watched him less than an hour ago lie and say that there are only six hundred and fifty people inside of CJC, where we know for a fact that is not true. So while we're talking about listening and working, let's do that. But we have to start from a place of honesty.
Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. Nobody spoke about that more tougher than harder down at the Board of Aldermen, so I get it, I get it. Absolutely, absolutely, we're working, we're working together on it.
I, I have to agree with Dr. Punch. That, that this is, that this is really something that cannot be addressed in this time frame. So, so that's, but so, so I would, I would like to see a more.
Dedicated space.
A, a, a space dedicated to just that issue, because that's much bigger than what we can deal with today.
And I, and if I can chime in on that, I agree. I, this is a conversation that is necessary, that we need to have. There is a lot of hurt, and we could dedicate a whole hour and a half or more toward this. So, so this is the commitment that I'm going to make today. At the Board of Aldermen, we have the Public Safety Committee. I saw the vice chair of that committee, Alderman Aldridge is here. I will talk with him and talk with the chair of the committee, Alderman Orion. And we'll, we'll get a, we'll get a committee hearing scheduled where public can come and share your concerns. And if Director Coyle is amenable, we can ask him to, to come and be a part of that as well. So we make sure that there's a forum for us to be hearing all the concerns that are being brought forth tonight, which will allow us to go forward into some action. But I think that action has to start with hearing some of the pain and the concerns that are in this room tonight. While recognizing that we don't have the time to do this subject justice that it really requires.
So prior, before we close out and get ready, again, please submit your questions and your follow-up information. But the other biggest concern that we got questions, not only for here, prior to be here today, are around staffing and policing here as a whole in the city of St. Louis. What is the current situation on the shortage of police officers in the city? Specifically, if I live on a street, a block from another street that I witness policing and protection daily, why don't I have it on my street? If you could just talk to the disparity in our officers right now, the policing, what we're doing to rectify that. And then I'm gonna ask for the last ten minutes, that again, please continue to submit your questions and we'll have people use two minutes to close out, out of respect for, again, President and CEO Mike McMillan giving us this extra time.
Okay, thank you very much. Listen, policing and hiring police officers is a crisis throughout the United States. There's, there's, almost every police department in the United States is down police officers. And St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department is not immune. Looking at the numbers from where we were a few years ago, we're down three hundred police officers.
We have more police per capita than New York City, Chicago, Detroit, Charlotte, Sarasota, name a city. And we have more police per capita than almost any other police department in the entire country.
I'm trying to answer the question as far as.
We're down three hundred police officers. We have more police officers than we are supposed to have per our population.
We're down three hundred police officers where we were three years ago. So I'm just trying to give the numbers, and then people are asking why they might see less police. And so they're seeing less police because we have to leverage technology. We have to make sure we do intelligence-based policing. We try to get to the places where there's patterns and trends, where things are happening so we can get out in front of it and be, not be reactive, but be proactive in policing. So it's not the amount of police officers you have, it's what are you doing with the police officers you do have and trying to use them as smartly as possible. And what we're doing more and more is going to community meetings, which we weren't, and asking each individual community, what are their concerns? And trying to make sure that we have the officers in the place that they're asking us to have. And then all in all, we also have a 911 system. And the 911 system, we have an operation to answer those calls. So we're driven to a lot of 911 calls. But in between calls for service, I'm asking my officers to be on directed patrol into the areas that the community meetings are asking us to be in. And so, yes, we're down officers, yes, you could talk about per capita. But this question was more about, why, why am I not seeing as many police officers? And the reason is, we are down. Per capita, we can know that, but per capita doesn't talk about, there's other things that come into per capita. Calls for service, there's all things that, how many calls for service to make sure that we can go out there and make sure that we can answer those calls for service. We talked about improving the 911 system, making sure we have enough people that have been hired. And Director Coyle did a tremendous job in his team, getting these people hired to make sure we can answer in a timely manner. And then our officers have to go out and execute those 911 calls. So we're doing everything we can. I, I encourage you to go to community meetings. If there's a specific block, even if it was up here in, in North Patrol, I do have a major, and I also have a district commander that's here. And I want them to hear your concerns. And then the officers are in these meetings to understand, straight from the community, they're coming to these community meetings, and so to make sure that they can, make sure that they know what's going on. And then in between their calls for service, to make sure we can get into those areas of concern and where things are happening.
Okay, thank you so much. So what we'll do now is follow up. And again, nobody up here is gonna walk out of this room and give up their position, give up the work they're doing, give up their heart for service, how they serve the community, how they show up, how they listen, how they want to respond, how maybe they might not be able to respond right then, but they need to work collectively to find pathways for us to respond. That's where spaces like this are created for us to do. And we have to move forward from these spaces. You can't just stay in a space like this, staying in, in the mindset that you're in right now and not be able to work together, because that will never change. And guess what? That's an intentional tool, too, that people use to keep us divided so that change doesn't really happen in our communities. So if you always want to go against each other, that's where the space is, where nothing is gonna get done. But if you want to come over here where people are working, communicating, meeting, funding, funding, putting policy in place, showing up every day in the midst of whatever else is going on, even within their own spaces, in their own communities, then that's the work that needs to be done if we're ever gonna move our city forward. So I'm gonna ask now, I'm gonna move down from here. If you can just close it out in two minutes, the director of public, I'm sorry, the director of security for Urban League has asked that after they close out, possibly lose some contact information as well, that they exit the room, and then we will all exit the room afterwards.
All right, good evening, thanks for having me. I appreciate being here. I am looking forward to an opportunity to speak with people that are interested about this correction facility. I have put a lot of work into it. I have listened, and I want to be able to explain that. But I thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here tonight to address you. And if there's a meeting set up that I can discuss, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody who has trauma right now, whether or not you realize it, so please take a nice big deep breath in through your nose and out through your mouth. And do not take this energy back and show it to your babies tonight, please. Release it, let it go, and let's show up and work again. That's what I'm here for. I just want to say something that might sound a little strange, but as a physician, here's a question I have that I want to end us with. You're not ready for this. Why is it that we think so little of the safety and the lives and the families of police? That we're willing to make them be the only solution to our community's needs? I have had police officers bleed to death in my hand. I've seen things you can't imagine. And their families cry, and their children are orphaned the same way. We need to decide that we are going to. We need to decide that we are going to invest in more and carve more than the police carry the burden of our traumas.
That's right.
Great.
And thank you all for coming out and engaging with us this evening, I mean, it's important to have these conversations. I look forward to continuing these conversations. One thing I've really emphasized during my tenure as Circuit Attorney is we wanna be transparent, we wanna make it clear to people what we're doing, the decisions we're making. You know, at the end of the day, as a prosecutor, enforcing the criminal laws, really, all we can do is take each case, case by case, look at the facts, apply to law, and make a decision. And when you do that, there's gonna be times when people disagree with the decisions you make, but we're gonna be transparent about it, and I'm gonna make sure, I'm gonna make sure that we have the staffing and the experienced attorneys in place to make those hard decisions, and enforce the laws the best we can, that's all we can do. So thank you for being here, we look forward to continuing to engage.
Chief Tracy.
So thank you very much for having us here at the Urban League, and thank you very much for the Urban League, and then those that stood up that had lost loved ones to violence. I was just at New Year's Eve, and mothers advocating for safe streets, and the anguish that people can go through, and I think Dr. Punch hit on that, as far as we can never make up for what you're going through, but my dedication and trying to help as part of just law enforcement, it's not just us, we're gonna try to work with everyone to try to make, to keep this city safer, that's our promise, and do it constitutionally, do it fairly, and work with all our partners in this room, and our officers, you know, they're human beings as well, they have families, they're going out, and a lot of them are doing the best job that they can, and I appreciate the work they're doing, and also I appreciate the community. For the last year that I've been here, as far as people coming up with ideas and trying to come together, to try to reduce this violence in meetings like this, although we might not always agree on things, I wanna make sure that the things that you've had issues, I would love to see you, ma'am, if we could just talk afterwards about your loss of your two brothers, and also there was, you're right here, ma'am, you moved on me, and the thing that you had with domestic violence, I have people ready to go to make sure we can talk to you privately, and if there's things that we didn't do, let's follow up and find out why, all right? Right, okay?
Thank you.
Well, I try to make as many events as possible, but I will make it to your event, I promise you that.
Yeah.
Mr. Clark?
All right, y'all, I think that this was a very, very productive event. I wanna thank President Megan Green for, yes, wanna thank, I got some pipes, wanna thank President Megan Green for calling this group together, yes, very good. You know, y'all, there's a real popular T-shirt out there that says, "St. Louis versus everybody." That's not true. It's St. Louis versus St. Louis. Once we can get out of our own way, once we can get back to genuinely respecting each other, then crime will go down. Brothers and sisters, I was born and raised in the Jeff Van der Lu neighborhood, we could stay outside until the streetlights came on, we were able to fight each other and be played later on. Now, now, brothers and sisters, I'm not gonna take up too much time, because I can go on and on right there, about saying no dips and dips, that's how we learned to share our snacks. I can go on for days and days, but y'all, this is where we gotta get real serious about this. There are generations banking on us to get this right.
That's good, that's why we're here.
Okay? There are unborn waiting on us to get this right.
That's why I'm here.
We gotta get over our personal addiction to friction, some of us love friction, and if there is no friction, guess what? We will create it. There, brothers and sisters, there are, there are generations banking on us to get this right. So y'all, let's come together, let's continue the conversation, but let's search, let's search for solutions.
Yeah.
We'll search for the solution, God bless you.
And when we talk about solutions, resources, and funding, and things are in place, again, we're in a space right now that has an abundance of programming, we have programming with Dr. Punch, Power Fest, Tieto, here we have FCC, Father Support Center, we have all kind of places, when I started this, I said, "We got everything we need in this room, but we all have to come together." So we'll have President Megan Green to close us out.
Just to close us out real fast, I wanna thank, first and foremost, all the community for coming out tonight. You know, there's a lot of places you could be on a Monday night, especially a dreary Monday night like tonight, and the fact that you chose to come here and have conversations that are necessary, I wanna thank you for taking that time.
Everyone spoke about the importance of community, but the way this was executed was really exclusionary to the community. There was two overflow rooms where people did not have the opportunity to engage with the panel. Everyone on the panel spoke about the importance of community, but I watched people walk out of the room because they did not have the opportunity to engage. So I heard it's a commitment, that the community is the way forward, so can you please make your commitment that what you submit, our most is that you have the capacity to engage with people being there?
Yes, definitely, and that is my apology, we did a Housing Town Hall last fall and did not have this level of attendance at that one that we had tonight, so we know that for going forward, and I also wanna make it clear that the Board of Aldermen is the place for community voices to be heard. We are the place that has public hearings, the Public Safety Committee that Alderwoman Clark Hubbard is on, and Alderman Aldridge, and Alderwoman Sanye, and I saw Alderman Oldenburg here at one point in time, that is the place where community can come and lend your voice. We have hearings there, sometimes just on topics, not even when there's legislation, but when we're looking for that community input and that community feedback, and so following, we, on a weekly basis, through my office, we get out the upcoming hearings that are coming and the agenda items, you can also look on the city website, the Board of Aldermen calendar gives an update, the Public Safety Committee meets every Thursday at two o'clock, at two o'clock, and these conversations will continue there, this isn't, this isn't the end, this is a jumping off point for us to hear some of the avenues that you want us to follow more. We, you know, we've heard a lot about traffic violence, we've heard a lot about building trust between city government and community, we've heard about concerns over the jails, all of these things, and so, these forums are an opportunity for us to hear you, to take that back into government and do something with it. And so this is not the end today, and I wanna thank you, you know, all for coming out, I wanna also give props to my staff for helping to organize this and put it on, I see Jay is back there at the moment, my chief of staff, and kinda keeps all the trains running on time, I wanna thank Alderwoman Clark Hubbard for her willingness to, to step up. And, and no, but the Board of Aldermen is here, right? We're a different Board of Aldermen than we were, you know, even six months ago, we're a board that is more policy-focused, we're full-time, which means we have a lot more time to have hearings, and sometimes very long hearings, but that is our job, and, and so I thank all of the voices that came out tonight that gave us really instrumental information that we need to take back into this new year, to continue to work with our collaborative partners that are here, and paint a path forward for all of the issues that were brought tonight. So this isn't the end, this is a jumping off part, and if you have questions that were not answered tonight, my office has that as long as you wrote it down, and we will be following up directly with you, and if we can't answer it, we'll help connect you to who can. So thank you so much, and everybody be safe driving home tonight.